All right, it's seven o'clock. So I will call to order the village council regular meeting at seven P M. Uh Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. We can all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Madam clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Um Cook?
Here.
Helmut? Is that who you said for last name?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm saying Kemp?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Ross, here.
And I'll make a motion to excuse Morgan Helmut. Support. Okay, motion by Cook, seconded by Kemp. Uh any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is item four, approval of the agenda.
The room changes, I'll approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Kemp, seconded by Ross. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Number five, presentations, there are none this evening. Number six, call to public. If anyone would like to address council, please step up to the podium.
How about, how about you over there?
Seeing no one approaching the podium, we will move on to the consent agenda, item seven A, please.
Motion to approve consent agenda items A, receive and file items, uh correspondent letters and communication, and department reports.
Second.
Good. Motion by Nikasia, seconded by Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. And uh motions in order for seven B, please.
Motion to approve consent agenda item B, approval items uh one, two, and three. Um and bills in the amount of three hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred eighty, or two hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-three cents.
Okay.
Motion by Nikasia, seconded by Ross. Roll call vote, please.
Um Cook?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yeah.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, they are approved. Number eight, unfinished old business A, the note of board council representative appointment. I believe we have a taker. Um Ashley, are you still okay with filling that role?
Yes.
Okay. Um so I will move to appoint Ashley Ross as um village council's note of board representative.
Support.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion? I think that is for, I'm trying to find my worksheet.
expires end of twenty twenty-six.
Two-year term, okay.
It says three-year term.
But uh.
It's, I think that three-year term is wrong because it says every two years you have to certify the council person's appointed.
Okay.
Let me check that. Yeah.
No, we don't have an alternate, but I think at least we have a member for now. So uh if anyone's interested in being alternate, let me know, but. Um okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Ashley. Eight B, the DDA appointment. Um so I'll move to appoint Rod Charles as the um at the township of Oxford's recommendation. Um for the seat that would replace Catherine Colvin, who just uh finished her term. And so this is a member-at-large seat, but um Mr. Charles also satisfies um one of the provisions under the DDA statute. That he is a bu- uh business owner within the district. So my motion is to appoint uh Rod Charles, accepting township's recommendation, um to the DDA board for a term of four years. Is that?
Yep, yep, four years ending twelve thirty-one twenty-eight.
Perfect. Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion by Cook, seconded by Ross. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Okay, motion carries. So that takes care of B. I also just wanted to mention that uh Marie's power seat is um expired, but she'll continue to serve until um just if there's any other candidates who might be interested, they could take Marie's seat, or I'd be happy to have her continue to serve if she's interested. So she'll just continue to serve until someone else is appointed. And then since Rod Charles moved into the space that was uh provided for Catherine Colvin for the township, Rod Charles' seat is now empty. So if there are any other applicants to the DDA, um it would be great to consider them. Um eight C, the CDDG, I'm sorry. Yep.
Quick question, and this is just like a process. So if Marie is interested, then would she start a new term?
She will.
This year? Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So she could continue on and council could appoint her and then, yeah, she would just keep on going for another four?
Four years.
Years, yeah. Uh okay. Eight C, the CDDG removal of architectural barriers door quote recommendations.
All right, council members, you, you see this, started this process last summer and gone through a couple iterations of it, but the bidding process has been really a chore to get people to show up and actually bid. Uh then the last bid we had, you know, as explained in the memo, um little snafu on the cashier's check for the bond. And other than that, I got back with the county and the provisions now we're gonna operate under are um a different procurement meti- uh method. So it would satisfy what we need for to approve secure door, um a demand of eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars as shown on the quote. Nope, I don't think I put it in there today. This is, this is for these doors right here. It'll be a two-swing double door. Um brand-new doors, new uh hardware, um casings and everything. Uh they'll be aluminum, so they'll stand up better to the weather and salt. And only the one on the left here would, will open because the other one, as it swings open, kinda gets in the way of the ramp if somebody was coming up the ramp. So saved a little bit of money by not having them both open, but the reason for that is because the way it swings open kinda blocks the ramp and we don't want it to necessarily be used as much. But I, as a matter of fact, um Mr. Austin Lacher from Oakland County, CDDG was here last week to do a little follow meet and greet with Vicky. Um and so he knows fully aware of what we're doing here and we're, we're okay with it.
Great. I think it seems to have worked out for the best and end.
Yeah, long way to get here, long way to get here, but yes.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions from council or any motions?
Motion to approve the award of the new double doors with an automatic opener for the council chambers exterior entrance to the secure door LLC at the price uh not to exceed eleven thousand dollars. Eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Support. Okay, motion by Nikasia, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh roll call vote, please.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carries, that is approved. Thank you. Thanks, Joe, for reaching out and getting that all taken care of, too.
Yeah. They're happy to see us go forward and spend some money.
Yeah, that's great.
We're not spending enough, they keep telling us.
Yeah. Uh okay, eight D is the DDA crosswalk and sidewalk repair project design and engineering proposal.
Yep, and I got a couple of the memos in there, one that had the DDA in front of them a few weeks ago, and then the most recent proposal from January third from um Row that was by direction of the DDA board that evening. Kinda spells out their uh plan and process and a lump sum fee for the design engineering of forty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. And it, if we can get that approved tonight, they can begin going forward with some of that process.
Ashley, were you at the last DDA meeting when this was discussed?
Yes.
Okay. Any thoughts or?
I think this makes the most sense. It throws in some, not throws in, but, but the DDA were able to cover more infrastructure with this grant to doing it this way. Um and the DDA board seemed agreeable and made sense, so I thought it was a good move and kind of a win for everyone.
Yeah, I believe that I, it's about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars or so um is the amount of the grant. Um what, what this really, I guess, approves is, is for Row to go ahead and start the engineering services. And so um if, if we wanna start doing this spring, summer, um we're gonna wanna go ahead and start uh engineering work right now.
Was this for that, is that ARPO grant through the Main Street? Is that where it came from again? That's the same one we've done?
Yep.
And they're, it's, is there a group using like design engineering to cover that and?
Well, the grant covers, only covers forty percent. Some of the things will be covered somewhat.
Gotcha. Yeah, so there was a match, okay.
I mean, basically, the DDA is gonna be putting in a little bit more for infrastructure than maybe necessarily imagined, but it's more cost-effective to roll it all into one. And I just, I think it all makes sense. So, and everyone agreed, so I think that.
The only thing outside of the original scope when Pete and I walked it with Paul from Row was the, this, the crosswalk thing at Mill Street. Uh other than that, there was a fair amount of work on the sidewalks, the old brick pavers and old tree wells from the intersection outward towards the crosswalk. There was a pretty large amount of that stuff that needs to be addressed, cracked, heaved, those replacing those old bricks with stamped concrete, so it'll be quite an improvement.
There are a few things that are gonna change, like on the crosswalks, for instance, like some details, but other than that, I probably agree with what's been said here.
Thank you. Okay.
What is the total amount that we can do, make a motion for?
Right now, it's twenty-nine thousand one hundred. Um again, your motion was the forty-seven thousand, but that included engineering to later for construction as well. The upfront design engineering is twenty-nine one hundred.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine one hundred?
Yeah, it's on, I think, page two of the year, second memo, the January third proposal. Yeah, dude. We had to go back and look, Vicky and I at our office, to go back and look at your motion to that, we, she had down forty-seven, like, gosh, you got forty-seven. That was all total, that included construction engineering as well. We're not into construction engineering at this point. It's design engineering and the bid specs and bidding it out, all that stuff is rolled into this part. Construction engineering can come later. So that's why it's only twenty-nine versus forty-seven that you had originally motioned was. Cause yeah, if you, if you add this up going across, it comes to forty-seven under the engineering costs, but we aren't utilizing all that right now. This proposal uncovers a portion of that work and a portion of that cost.
So do we need to break this apart like that?
No, when they come back with a proposal then for, you'll have, he, they're gonna put together the bid specs and bid it out, and then go to the bids, review them, and then help you guys award it to the contractor. At that point, they'll say, okay, now you need us to be onsite and, and uh and things like that. That's what some other costs will come in later for those onsite items.
But tonight is just the twenty.
Tonight's a design and engineering and.
Twenty-nine one hundred.
And doing the bid specs and bidding it out, things like that. That's why it's about eighteen thousand less than you, your motion was, because some of that will come later on in the project.
Uh, I don't have a motion.
Do you have any doubt?
Yes, maybe. Um I will make a motion for Row to provide the services provided um not to exceed twenty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. Do I need to add anything else to that?
Just per the memo, proposal dated January third.
Memo dated January third, twenty twenty-five.
That's good.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Ross, seconded by Nikasia. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Kemp?
Yes. Nikasia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries, that is approved. Thank you. Number nine, new business A, the proposed resolution twenty-five oh one to opt out of public health insurance contribution.
And this is something that we've been doing, communities were across the state since two thousand and eleven when it first came out. Um the legislature did update it uh January one of this year, but didn't affect our, the way we operate under this. So we're just gonna continue our opting out of the eighty-twenty portion of that uh act, public act. It leads us up to our own devices then to um manage our healthcare costs differently than have an eighty-twenty split.
It's hard to imagine, but the new legislation didn't make a lot of sense.
Oh.
Because it, it said one thing and then it said another thing, but after we looked at it very closely, this, this provision was untouched. So your ability to opt out of being part of the, the eighty-twenty is still on the table. And you've done it.
Since I've been here for seven years and I've been doing it since two thousand and eleven.
I think since, since it came out, I think, two thousand and eleven, yeah.
Great, thank you. I'll move to um adopt resolution twenty twenty-five zero one as presented. Support. Uh motion by Cook, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh roll call vote.
It's, some of the resolutions A's and A's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Oh, that was.
Don't uh resolutions need to be roll call or?
It's a, it's a, you don't have to.
Resolutions should be roll call.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how we, we've always treated it, though.
Yeah.
All right, Cook?
Yes.
Uh Kemp?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And motion carries, that is adopted. Nine B, um the discussion of residential rubbish collection contract.
Yeah, so our contract is up, I think, September, end of September perhaps. And as you know, we had a change last July and there was a lot of consternation and hiccups. And I think it's kinda leveled off at this point. Um it, but rather than waiting till summertime and putting it out there and, and seeing where we're at, I, I would like to do it sooner rather than later, maybe even next month or two, to put it out there and see what kind of price we can get. There's, there's fewer and fewer players all the time. There's still a few locals around, but then there's some bigger players, all Metro Detroit and across the state, Waste Management being one of them.
It's really a changing industry. I, I just finished SIO, Pittsfield, Celine, Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti Township and anywhere. As, as an array of RFPs, but we're, people, the number of entities that are responding to RFPs is getting lesser and lesser, as you know. You have some, some peculiarities based on where you're situated here that Joe and I were, Joe mostly was thinking that we could, we could start some dialogue with some smaller companies and some, some companies that aren't getting into the big bids and whatnot and see where the market is. You wanna give yourself time because the, the truck amortization ability is, is an issue, so you don't wanna wait and try to get a good contract right when it's, okay, we need it next month.
Right.
Cause they wanna have time to have a contract and order trucks and whatnot, so.
Okay.
It's something good. We should start looking into it now, as Joe has suggested.
So he's saying, send out uh request for proposal?
Probably, probably not an RFP yet. Um I have a, a couple good templates that you can use for, for RFPs that have worked. And um but I, I think what, what, what Joe is thinking is a good idea is that's, we're just gonna start some dialogue.
Oh, just dialogue, okay.
With some folks and see where, where the market is for us. Kind of a, you, you're actually, you're actually a community, desirable community for waste collection. Cause you're kind of a rooftop cookie cutter type community, you know, and it's an easy route per se for, for some of these. So it'd be a nice contract for somebody.
Yeah.
So we're gonna see what we can do out there.
Yeah, and, and sorry, I had to quiet the mice down a little bit. And, and whether we do the full sealed bid process like that, I don't necessarily know. If we, you know, there's only gonna be two or three, probably, we can get even interested in the work. And so maybe we'll just kinda reach out to them on a one, one-off basis, you know, and bring stuff to back to council. You know, maybe if not by the February meeting, but the March is the latest.
Do you think priority want, does priority want to continue, even though?
I would think so.
Yeah.
I'm sure they'd love it even more had they, had the township gone differently and they, and they got the township business.
They, they've settled, um, they've settled into their new role after picking up all that, all the asset purchase from, from GFL. They, they had some ruffles.
Oh, yeah.
You know, um newsworthy ruffles and I sat through my share of trying to iron those out and it uh. It's one thing about waste hauling, you know, it's, it's great. If you never hear about it, it's great.
Exactly.
The minute you start hearing about it, it's not good. Because it's, it's, it's something that affects people's lives and it's, it can become a big issue in, in a community. And you really don't wanna get in that position.
For sure.
I do think it's important in the discussions. I know during the previous discussions, I wasn't on council, but attended the meetings. And hearing residents, I think the recycling part, making sure it's actually being recycled is a big topic for our residents. And they really want to make sure that whoever we end up with, that not only do we have recycling, but it's actually going to a recycling.
Well, you're, 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 this time, your, your contract will designate the MRF uh to where the recycling has to go by contract. Fortunately or unfortunately, your, your state government's getting really involved right now on composting and recycling. Uh they're issuing part one, these are part one fifteen to get some regulations under MRFs and compost facilities. Think in your, in your time on council here, you're gonna be around to see um kitchen waste, um food waste from your residential kitchens to be included in your yard waste for composting. I'm a huge proponent of that uh because of the clog in the landfills with uh with food waste. So most of my most recent contracts with communities have included kitchen waste going into the yard waste and into the compost facilities, so.
Yeah, I've actually heard of that a lot, too, within the county, like Birmingham really wants it.
Birmingham, why, I, I, in my Waste Authority, I have Birmingham Royal Oak, Ferndale, and Hazel Park that are progressively pushing me to, to.
Yeah.
To make sure in twenty-seven, the contract includes that. But I think the governor is very close to making it mandatory, so. Dana Nessel is really behind it.
Yeah.
I would definitely love to see the kitchen waste included. And if they are providing the cans, can we request a more subtle color than bright meand green?
Yeah, but if, if you get into a new contract and you're gonna go carts, I mean, we have some, that, that's why Joe's wisdom of starting early is so good. It is because you wanna have time. Most of them get their carts from a company called Cascade over on the west side and you could, yeah, you can have some control over that.
Think other communities.
And we've been, we've been bargaining, we've been bargaining in contracts recently to, you know, have choices on, on the size of, you know, give everyone ninety-five to begin with.
You have to have tippers then, though. You have to have.
Yeah, but, but that.
They're too big to pick up.
I think that's not the most important thing, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's some issues that we can work through, but uh.
Even if you do the smaller recycling bins. I mean, typically, they want the company colors. Prior is gonna be a bright yellow.
Or at least a sticker.
You know, yeah.
So um I, I don't know that we need to discuss this here, not make any conversation um uh in the future. The, the contract downtown, that, for all the garbage pickup and collection and all that, that doesn't line with this at all.
Right, this is residential curbside only.
That's separate.
There's, there's no way to do residential pickup in the downtown for those apartments that are upstairs and stuff.
Yeah, so is there gonna be a solution for that? I mean, cause they're technically.
Separate contract.
Yeah, not, no. Uh to answer your question, no. Um there won't be a solution as far as residential curbside. Their only good, the option they have will still be take, walk out to the dumpster and throw it in there. Um again, we, when we're looking at the DDA as a whole district, you know, from the south to the north and then a little bit of these weird spots over left, yet, we're, we're on the cusp of maybe having a hundred residents. So it's a small amount of residents in that. And then even smaller amount of that is what's in the uh garbage collection district that they have designated here in the village. If you, there's a map written in the ordinance and spells out where the garbage collection, rubbish collection district is, I think it is, they can describe it. And it's by street and by how many feet, whatever, in the downtown that are serviced by those cans. That won't change. But I know I have at least one downtown resident who may or may not bring the recycling and put it in our cans out front.
Yeah.
So on your, on your, cause I know you're, you're really wanting to talk about the food waste and, and the, the question becomes, you know, what do you do when yard waste is seasonal, right? So what we've done in the community is if we have strategically positioned dumpsters just for the food waste during the time when there's no yard waste collection. So it, it's, it's very difficult from a behavior standpoint to change what people are doing. I mean, if you, you know, you change what's recyclable and the world starts to shake, right? So you don't wanna get a behavior of doing food waste and then cut it off for four months out of every year because you're not doing.
Yeah.
Not supposed to put food waste in compost?
As your lawyer, I'm advising you not to.
Well, here's the thing, what they call, in our con-
It was just a question.
In our con, in our contract, it's called yard waste.
It's just yard waste.
It's yard waste. It's not, they take it and turn it into compost.
And then you, you know, what we've done, the way we get, the way we've handled that, cause you're, you're asking a good question, is, it's, it goes to the definition of what is yard waste.
Right.
So yard waste is now includes the organics from kitchen scraps.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a garden in your yard, it would be.
Right, right.
You can put your stuff in your garden.
Right. You're just eating part, you're just eating part of it now. And, and, and your point is well-taken because, you know, landfills are clogged with about twenty-three percent. Twenty-three percent of landfills are taken up yearly by yard, by food waste.
I think it helps produce methane, though.
It does, but.
For the power plants.
But the waste aversion is a worthy.
Yeah, I know. That's what they go for. Rather than trying to capture, that's a breakdown, they just even put it where it belongs, it's better, do a better job to get it to break down.
Yeah.
Anyways, Joe and I will spend some time.
And that's the thing, we would have to determine what kind of spec we want. Do we, do we, if you were to ask, do you wanna have the ninety-five gallon tippers that everyone has to have? They have to buy them, they have to buy them, or would you like to say, what's really common is people have their own trash can and they have a, a, a small recycle bin. And that's, that's really just, I, I know it's most common, cause then you, you have, you have the ability to just pick it up by hand. Once you go to the ninety-five gallon tippers, they have to have the tipper mechanisms on the truck.
Right.
Um and it just makes it a little more difficult. They have to buy bigger trucks or different trucks, or maybe somebody won't bid on it because they don't have tippers, they don't wanna buy a tipper truck just for this one route or something like that.
A lot of, a lot of smaller, tighter communities aren't, aren't always in favor of, of the, the, the big.
Yeah.
Because, you know, people don't put them away right away and then the community, I, I had to do a contract up in Frankenmuth and it was absolute, there could be no carts. And you'd be surprised, say, why wouldn't you want carts? Well, they want the trash gone because they're a destination, recreation city, right? They don't want carts sitting out all around Frankenmuth, right? So they, they demanded no carts.
My mom's ninety-four, she has like one bag a week. She puts this huge cart outside of that thing out there and it's got one bag in the box.
So we'll work through, that's why we wanna, we wanna just let you know Joe's alerting you wisely that we're gonna start talking about this.
I do think with a high rental population as well, where there's more transition, I have found it to be extremely helpful to not have necessary limits on amounts. I will say that.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, balancing cost is gonna come into that, with that.
And I, I like contracts where whatever's put out, you take.
Right.
The, the caveat to that typically is when somebody who's on land comes in and fills up half this room out to the curb, that's typically unacceptable to the hauler.
Yeah.
It, it's, you know, hey, you throw a mattress out and the next week you throw a couch out, next week you got two bags of garbage, that's fine.
We usually have twice a mon, twice a month, um, you know, weight good days where you can put out.
You can call our provider right now and tell them.
Yeah, and, and you schedule a white.
They put everything that's put out there out there.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, but those are something, those are scenarios where it's your common use. It's just, hey, I just happen to be cleaning out my garage. But when the landlord comes in and there's an apartment and they went to evict someone over eight months and the people just left the house full of stuff, and next thing you know, there's forty yards of stuff.
Yeah, it's tough.
It's not bagged up nicely. That's what they call a sheriff eviction, something like that, and then they set books, everything out to the road. That's unacceptable to almost every hauler. So it's, those are, those are the ones you have to say, that's, that, they're not gonna want that. The, the normal situation where it's a household and, you know, you get, you know, two new mattresses for your kids, so you put one out one week, one the next, or next week it's your, a new couch. And next week it's, you got twenty bags of garbage. So what? That's normal.
We would have a bulky item weight good provision.
But it's the, it's the landlord sheriff eviction type one that they're not up for.
All right, that was just information.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion if you want to? Okay. We will move on to nine C, the special event application for Goddard's pre-k degree graduation. This is an annual thing and they sure do get their application in early.
I'm just gonna say, boy, they are not late.
No.
It's uh almost six months from now. But after, you know, a couple years ago, they had that little conflict with somebody else.
Yeah.
So they have everything in order. Um I don't have it checked off there, but matter of fact, their insurance, we still have it from last year, we knew it's in like April. So we didn't wanna get it now. We'll wait till it renews and then get it from them. So it's the current one versus having one here that's gonna be expired by the time this gets approved or happens.
Motion to approve, um, uh, this is a little moment. Special, special event application by Goddard. Is that good?
Special event application twenty-five oh one, sure.
Okay.
Support.
Motion by Nikasia, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay, motion carries, that's approved. Next is the um memo from our treasurer, the tax collections on that by the village. So the costs are going up and we can do it ourselves, I see.
Well, and right now, we're doing a lot of it. And um, talking to the county and everything, I already have my list of classes that I'll be taking at the county, I got that yesterday.
Great.
I don't see why, why not, that's why you guys hired me too, I don't see why I can't do it. Um, the county's gonna come here and help me, and my mother's classes, because she's gonna go with me. Um, she already collects a lot of that stuff, it's gonna take out steps for her and save us a lot of money. So.
Yeah.
The only thing I ask is that I can buy a folding machine.
Yeah.
For paper, so.
Right, yeah.
Cause she's thinking we want to print and mail it all, cause before we would pay Oakland Community Schools, whatever, we'd, we'd send them, we'd pay them five hundred dollars to print and mail and stuff.
Right.
She's thinking, well, we buy our, we buy our folder, we just print American House, cause it's not like printing twenty thousand.
Yeah, I talked to the King King, they said they'd help me stuff and do all that stuff too, so.
Great, excellent.
And does that mean our residents are signing the checks here?
They do already.
They already do, you're, you're, you're doing three quarters of this already.
It was just the southern part with the county that.
Township, you know, charges you and does a little.
He's still gonna have to do a lot of the split, I don't know, I think he does like a lot of the, when a new resident comes in, you have to take all your paperwork there, that kinda stuff. I won't be doing it, the assessor still does it at the county level too, so he's still gonna have to work with me. He just won't be doing that.
He'll save some money.
Yeah.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will make a motion for our village treasurer to take on the responsibility of collecting and filling the village taxes.
Support. Yeah, um, motion by Ross, seconded by Nicosia, any further discussion? Hearing none, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next nine E, open burning ordinance review, and I see we have Chief Majestic here, he looks great.
Yeah, and um, you know, this is something that Chief and I would discuss months ago, and, you know, as my backburners got a little emptied out, I was able to address it again. I started months ago, worked that sidetracked. He'd like to see ours mirror as closely as possible to the township. Uh, they don't issue permits anymore, and if you wanna expand on how, you know, I kinda, I have a copy of your, the township ordinance in here, I have the uh screenshot of it off your website, talks about the burn permits and that they still have to call and things like that. Our ordinance is kinda old and clunky, um, it talks about.
That was nice way to put it.
Well, it talks about open burning, open burning is allowed when you have over an acre, well, we have very few parcels that are over an acre.
Right.
And we have different ones, you know, it just.
Yeah, I find, yeah, I mean, say, our ordinance, I think, needs to be, I mean, it's not well written at all, and so I think the townships is well written, is my initial concern, and maybe I can hear from Chief about this, it's just given the difference in property size from the township to the village, is there a way to safely maybe expand some of the distances and, or, I mean, reduce some of the distances for our village homes? Cause it may preclude really anyone from having like a bonfire.
You have a forty foot one or something, and if it's over an acre, it's fifty foot.
We do, we do for larger pieces of property, but the, the properties that fall within the village wouldn't meet that any, none of them would meet it. You know, I mean, um, what we're.
Would you mind coming up to the podium, Chief, sorry, I think we might have a bunch of questions.
I thought you guys had a thing where if it was, it's forty foot from a building, or fifty foot from a building, if it's less than an acre, or something like that.
I, I, oh. I have lots, I think they're all good, I just have lots.
Yeah, they, you know, what it really comes down to is, y- yes, we want people to be able to have a backyard bonfire and, you know, do their Friday night, Saturday night, right, and with the little burn pits that they have, the, the store bought, the commercial, those are great, we have no issue with that. Um, what we, what we don't want is somebody cutting down a tree uh here in the village and deciding to burn the whole thing rather than having it disposed properly.
I understand.
That's, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah.
Right, and we're just trying to be safe. And right now, the only thing that we also do, uh, as Mr. Mador talked about, we eliminated the burn permit process. We still maintain the phone number, if, 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 if we have high winds, excessive drive periods, we turn it off. And it's just the person calls in, it said, no burning today, and that's it. Other than that, you know, we're not charging for permits anymore, we're not issuing permits anymore, it's just, it, it's antiquated, so.
So people will be expected to know, to call before they, just to see if there's.
Everything, everything that was in place with the permit.
Right.
Remains in place, with the exception of an actual permit and they still, even before, they still had to call the number.
Right, just to let you know that there was a fire there.
So now they call the number and it says, okay to burn, or it says, burning is uh shutting down for the day or for the week due to drought conditions or whatever the case may be, that's it.
Right.
Nothing has changed on the, on the part of the uh resident.
Yeah, personally, I've done that, I, every time we call, we do call, and I do, I have heard it say, you know, like no burning today, so that is really helpful.
Question. To that, I absolutely agree, our current one needs a lot of updating. Um, I guess a couple of questions, our current one is twenty-five feet from any structure, this takes it fifteen feet for those portable ones. I don't know how that works for a lot of these properties, like I think I might have one spot on my property that would then be allowable, but the twenty-five foot, it was not allowed anywhere on my property to lawfully burn.
So if you got one of those above ground or stand up things, then you can reduce it to fifteen feet.
Correct, but I'd say even fifteen feet from any surrounding structure.
Is tight.
Is very tight for a lot.
For a lot line, is that, yeah.
Nope, it's structured, huh?
Combustible material and of structure, combustible material and of lot lines.
Oh, wow.
So the fifteen feet allows.
It's already reduced, but I'm, I'm sorry, if, if you don't have the space.
Well, I just, so, I.
There's a reason we have this, right, you know, so we don't want people burning their, their neighbors' houses down.
I don't have to.
We literally had that happen last year, in the township, down on the west, on the west end of town, west end of the township. And somebody started a fire and neglected to stay with it, and next thing you know, their neighbor's fence and shed is on fire. Because they didn't pay attention to it and didn't keep, stay on top of it. And, you know, if you're in a space that you don't meet the requirements, you don't meet the requirements, you shouldn't be burning. And it's sad, I, I hate to say that, we, as blunt as it is, but that's why we have ordinances. We don't want people burning their neighbors' houses down, or their houses down, or their sheds, or their garages, it's that simple, we, we've got it reduced already.
Fifteen foot's pretty small.
Yeah, fifteen feet is very small.
I mean.
How, how far is it from the back lawn to this wall, do you think?
Thirty feet.
Thirty-five, thirty-five, forty feet.
You could have one in this room. If this was your backyard.
Yeah.
How much of an issue is it right now, like how is this currently?
Look, here's the thing, we have one instance for a reason. We will end up enforcing the ordinance when we receive a response. If a person is, like, I don't have the staff to be sending guys out checking neighborhood bonfires on a Friday or Saturday night in the summer. Uh, it's just not, we're not doing that, so here's what it comes down to. You can have your fire, you can do what you're going to do. If it gets out of hand or creates a problem and we come out, you're gonna get a fine from the police department. You, if, if you cause damage to somebody's property, you're gonna be responsible.
What about on events like Halloween, for example, when you have people out in their front yards having fires? I, 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 just all the things that ran through my head, I think this is very well written.
We aren't, we aren't the fire pit, bonfire police. We're the fire department, if something gets out of hand, we're gonna be there, right? We're not out to mess with people's Halloweens, please don't start that, but my goodness, I mean.
I don't care, I just, I wanna ask all the questions, because it's all.
You will be hard pressed to see us out on Halloween doing that when we're doing other things, I know, and we have to, we're we're not going out and checking people's bonfires in their driveway with the fire pits, it's, that's part of Americana, I would.
Yeah.
Right, if, now, again, if something happens and somebody gets hurt, something gets burned, property gets damaged, that person will be held responsible. It's a simple task, I mean, you still have to be safe and be good neighbors to, you know, to your neighbors, right? But again, we're not out to try and go after people, it's not.
Yeah. All in all, I think the, a lot of the ordinance makes great sense, there were some things toward the end of it as far as cost recovery and things like that, we would have to maybe meld in with ours or, or something like that, but not that it's gonna change, but maybe just tweaking wording for, cause it references your ordinance and ours might reference a charter or something like that.
Seems like we can tailor right with yours.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it comes to the cost recovery, those are, we're bound by that with some of our mutual aid tax within Oakland.
Yeah.
Uh, if, if, if something happens, we need, if, if assistance from other communities, they're gonna send us the bill.
Yep.
And then you forward that on, and it's, and it's based on the county um mutual aid association's uh agreements, you know, so that's, that's out of our hand, and that's it.
More so, I was thinking about it, if it's referenced something there, and it references like a township ordinance or something like that, we're just gonna make sure that ours doesn't reference a township ordinance.
Right.
Irrelevant.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, overall, I would like to see our ordinance be as close to a township as possible, just for ease of implementation across Oxford, um.
Very, very possible.
Maybe we can give that back.
Yep.
Then we can bring something back to council.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have anything in front of you tonight to approve, we're just kinda broaching the subject tonight, highlighting the areas that stick out in ours and how, I, by highlighting ours, it kinda points out how, again, old and just clunky it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Just curious, what is your uh opinion on burning leaves and why you would or would not want to do that?
Doesn't the state of Michigan frown upon that as far as pollution?
We're not starting burning leaves, but it is.
I've always told people, no, they're not allowed, typically.
Yeah, it's, it's a nightmare, it's an absolute nightmare.
It's a nuisance.
Those fires get out of hand more than anything, anything.
People leave them unattended.
We had at least two last year doing the exact same thing. One right here on, well, actually, it was actually back on the Seymour Lake, just outside of the village, uh, just before we hit the lakes. So they decided to burn, and now, next thing you know, we actually almost had a car accident because there was so much smoke coming across the road.
Yeah.
So, that's why, if they're unsafe, they get out of hand quickly, even if you're there, you know, as a good homeowner with a, with a hose nearby, once it gets big, your hose isn't gonna do anything, and we're seeing that in California now. Garden hose doesn't do anything, just doesn't provide the volume or the pressure, you know, and that's why we stay away from burning leaves, it's just not safe.
Makes sense, thank you.
People, people don't like it, and I get it, you know, it's not safe.
I'll burn mine, I'm just, I'm just.
That would be some real life examples.
Thank you.
Did you say, I don't burn mine? I think you said, I don't burn mine. They don't burn.
We're not the so-called fire police, like I said, we're the fun over there. Good deal.
Well, that was the reason to put it on the agenda, I know it was months ago that Chief brought me, and then I called BJ last week, we talked to him a little bit about it, I let him know it was gonna be on here, so.
I think that's great, if we could get something up for, for next month, if it's in order to go, that'd be great, um, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, like this.
So, there's several persons.
Yes, we're just gonna make sure, as much as we'd like to just blow it away, but.
We have to, we have to read through every sentence.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion on the um, for the ordinance, right, okay. Um, time, we have no items removed from consent agenda, so we'll go to the second instance of public comment, anyone like to speak on a public comment? Seeing none, uh, look to committee reports. Um, Noda, I'm not sure if Noda has met, Joe, do you?
Um, Thursday this week, there's gonna be Noda meeting.
This Thursday, okay, okay.
I'm gonna try and make it, and I'm sure of the time.
I'm not sure if they met December or not.
Yeah, okay, no worries, yeah, we'll catch up whenever we get to their next meeting. Um, and then Planning Commission and Kewell Commission is low and she's absent, but did the Planning Commission even meet? No, okay. Um, DDA, Jacob?
Uh, can anyone go on? Um.
I don't know, do I?
Well, I'd like to give you a chance to uh go over any, any bigger things, um, and then also all, anything that I remember as well, too, so.
Okay, yeah, I took a look at the, the meeting um from last, just to kind of, at that point, we had the Polar Express and the Holiday Market still to come. Um, events, they did go very well, I don't know if anyone heard, but we had a snafu with the trolley, so Lake Orion unfortunately did not get to utilize the trolley for their Trolley Express event, um, we however did, so we got very, very lucky and that it turned out very, very well, a lot of positive feedback. Um, what I've spent most of um my time since our last meeting has been around organizational sustainability, so really looking at our processes, procedures, documentation and preparation for accreditation coming up next month, um, and then also probably through your accreditation and then staffing, so I've gone through a series of interviews, um.
And that's on the fifth?
Pardon?
Is that on the fifth?
February fifth, the accreditation, yeah, and I'll send the agenda out, cause I know that they'll wanna have an opportunity to speak with multiple people that are involved with the DDA. Um, so if you can make it, that'd be wonderful, um, we had some new board members, so that's been exciting. Um, we've had some of those new board members attend board training, and we've talked about having more of an informal in-house training process for our board, just to get on the same page when it comes to strategic planning for twenty twenty-five, just making sure everybody knows what their roles and responsibilities are and how to proceed over the next year. I've met with a couple of the business owners in the area, they already made this reopening or has reopened over the last week, so that's exciting. One drop will be reopening in spring. I don't know, patience, I don't know.
We gotta work out some bugs maybe there.
Same location. I always forget that that's in the village, just because it's so far.
Like, no, we, I told it when I met with the owners, that they're like, we can't tell, they're kinda like, uh, forgotten, but they're still part of us, so, um, yes, somewhat same owner.
Same location?
Same location, yes, yep, and then we have another one coming in tomorrow for someone that wants to open a business within Oxford, so some good, good meeting creates with that. Um, and then the trolley's in for maintenance currently, so I wanna meet with the mechanic group and see where we're at with that, really taking a look with legitimately under the hood and understanding the workings of the trolley to understand what we're looking at longer term. Our EV committee is doing an analysis right now around costs and return, and what would make the most sense from a ridership standpoint and a cost standpoint. I will say, although it's, it's kinda funny with the timing, but we have gotten some interest and positive responses in regards to sponsorship for the trolley for twenty twenty-five, so that's encouraging. Um, so I think that's, we'll, we'll figure something out, it may not look exactly like it looked in twenty twenty-four, but I do imagine that we'll have some movement around.
Will, um, will, are Lake Orion also be bringing funding for the trolley this, this next year as well, or is that?
That's TBD, so they are currently also going through kind of a reevaluation in twenty twenty-five with their board, um, and looking at what they want to spend their funding on, we've talked about, you know, maybe taking a step back from partnering on events only and really looking at business development as well in twenty twenty-five, so from a financial standpoint, they want to understand what the results of our analysis are when it comes to the trolley, look at the sponsorship opportunities and look at what the cost would be from a, like a consistent standpoint over the next nine months. Um, they have not sent you your name at this point.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate that. Jacob, anything you wanna add?
Um, I'm trying to think if there was anything, no, I believe that's it.
Okay.
We already discussed the, the project up here, so, it's, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Callian Tram, is that Joe?
Yeah, um, I, because of the holidays and stuff, I didn't make December meeting, and I think tomorrow, I mean, it's tomorrow, we're actually telling you. You gonna make it? Okay, all right.
Thanks, Joe. Um, the ZBA, I assume is not met?
Correct.
Didn't.
Okay, sorry, thanks. Um, and then manager clerk staff attorney reports, Mr. Mador?
Um, yes, um, Chief Soul, as you know, his father passed away last week, and then he was sick this weekend, and he's back today at about maybe fifty percent capacity, so he's kinda was squirreled away in his room. That's why he's not here tonight, so he's on the mend. That's why he's not here tonight, so he's on the mend, both, you know, with family and sickness as well. Um, John Knowles, who's been on our Planning Commission, and I think he was on the DDA maybe at one time, no, Planning Commission for a lot of years, he, um, a lot of changes coming his way and his family, he might can be out, might be out of town a lot next year, hoping his father's in Indiana, so he resigned today from the Planning Commission.
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah.
And he was.
Yep, yep, he was in the office today, gave me a letter, uh, we talked quite a bit, a lot, his place can be full still, just in a lot of different things going on, so we will have a vacancy on that. Um, and I briefly mentioned, and Kimberly, I know you and I spoke briefly, and I mentioned the council tonight as well, that perhaps trying to find a time in February, where the DDA and the council could meet as a joint workshop, budget workshop session, something like that. Maybe in the middle of the month, maybe the end of February, I don't know. Uh, I don't know what nights work better for people, um, so we'll have to get an idea of some of those. Uh, and the only thing on the agenda that, that night would be just, we'd sit in the, in the, uh, community room, I'll sit around the table, and just talk about overall budgets and things like that, I think.
Question on that, so the, uh, DDA's org committee seems to be the one that puts the budget together, I don't know if that's gonna be the same this year or not, but would they, I know they could attend the meeting as public, but how could or could they not participate in a budget discussion?
I think it should be like just a joint session, we both post it as a meeting, we're both all there.
With the org committee members as well, though?
Oh, well, I mean, they, they could be there in attendance, of course, but, you know, the meeting is the meeting with the members that are there.
Could the org committee members contribute at all?
I suppose, that's up to the chair who's running the meeting, which perhaps could be you and or whoever their chair is, uh.
Yeah, I'd like to run a meeting, I don't know, I was just curious as to like, I don't know, I guess something that Kimberly didn't think about.
Yeah, well, again, and, and some of the org committee members have been in a couple of years, so they're familiar with it, some, in some sense, are more familiar with it perhaps than the regular members, and then we have a couple newer members too.
That's true.
Uh, it's a joy, I think it is, it's brand new, so I think it's a, a good opportunity for all the DDA members to sit at a table and go through this process. And we can, we can kind of go through it in a way, even if we spend five minutes saying, here's how we go through ours, line by line by line by line by line, cost center to cost center, and this is how we go through it. And then have a larger discussion about, you know, budgets and overlaps and things like that, and costs, sharing costs, things like that, and then, I, I think they amongst themselves should probably come up with the idea that, you know, that, that's a better process, that we should implement that process ourselves, and not just leave it up to, to DDA members and three or four committee members.
Right.
To do all that work, when, and again, if they did all the work preliminarily, and then brought it back to the DDA in April, and brought it back to the DDA in May, and, you know, that'd be different, but I, if you recall, last year, it was like, just pack it on Friday, the meeting's Monday, and we're gonna prove our budget. And then, you know, you had, you know, three days as a member, not on that committee, to see the budget and getting questions answered, and then by the way, you were approving it in three days. So I think that it'll be a good time to meld together, talk about the bigger picture, the overlaps, the cost shareings, whatever that we have done in the history, historically, um, and then I think find a better process.
That'd be great, thank you.
Hey, Joe?
Yep.
Alright, um, everything's been really good for me, I, I'm loving working here, I just want to say thank you again, for giving me the opportunity. Um, I've been spending the last month working on what it would take for me to take over the taxes and stuff like that, um, so I've been talking to a lot of people at the county, and different treasurers and stuff like that, to kind of get an idea, going through our ordinance and stuff like that. And I met with the CDBG, I'm gonna say that wrong, but for like two hours last week, they did like a one-on-one kind of thing, walked me through the whole process and how they work and where those funds come from and all that kind of stuff, so that was one interesting, and I was glad they came and did that with me. Because I had never heard of it before, never utilized it in my township and that, so that was good. Um, I got myself registered for class for the treasurers, for the basic institute and that, and I'm going to a workshop in Lansing for Thursday or Friday. I'm also going to the county Thursday morning for that class, and that's the supplement, that's the start, those classes for this year to hopefully get me where I need to be, so other than that, that's about it.
Wonderful, thank you. Bob?
I have nothing of that magnitude.
Yeah, maybe pictures, well, yeah.
I was, I was sitting there trying to think of something that could parallel that, but no, congratulations.
Thank you.
On all of that, and, uh, we're good, um, I'll advise you if I hear of any, uh, legal issues that you need to be focused on.
As always, thank you.
I'm just back up with sleep, I know I put it up beforehand, I put it on Facebook yesterday, I might have shared, and I had a memo, and they're about the EV stations downtown.
Oh, yes.
Um, so luckily, you know, we, we kind of, we're in a little limbo for a while, um, I've noticed that the handles have been changed out even before I got that email, and so I finally get the email, I'm like, okay, so something is happening there. Um, and again, we didn't fund them, we didn't, uh, we don't manage them.
Hear nothing.
So it's great, we, we're the best of both worlds, we didn't put out any money, um, so I don't have all the details of what platform it's gonna be on, but I'm sure once that's out there, people will connect to them and realize what platform they have to have, whatever. But I'm just very thankful that they're just gonna sit there and look with bags over there for the next six months. The DVD was going around today and pulling the bags off, because we have the bags for the reserved parking we had on there for, uh, I don't know, months and a half or so. So, hopefully that'll be right back in and be as planned and working function just right.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, council comments, Asher?
No comments, I see, thanks.
Thank you. Yep. Jacob?
Go Lions, alright?
Alright, alright.
I thought you were gonna take mine. Uh, that's all that I got.
That's a good one.
Can we see a mo-, uh, the emergency notification back on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, for those texting.
I think it probably fell.
Yeah, and I kind of had one picked off, and I had one picked out, but then, you know, the one of them I was kind of liking, well, they're, they're based out of England and stuff, like, I really don't want to do that, because some of them you see and you read them, and it sounds good, but like, well, you have to call a code, different country and everything, but I'm like, no. Well, because some of them, again, I, are something that are smaller, they're gonna be in the hundreds of dollars, so once I choose one, if we can, you know, um, we'll, we'll work it out. And, and something else came up just recently, and I thought, well, that'd be a good way for them to maybe utilize it too, for somebody else outside of us, um, I can't recall what it is off the top of my head, but it would make sense.
Great, um, I'll just mention that, um, since we do have a open dining commission seat now and two, potentially two DDA seats, if anybody is aware of anyone who might be a good fit for any of those, please let me know. Perhaps we can do some kind of advertisement or something, solicit some applications too. Um, and then Joe and I, um, I think I had mentioned this before, but there's a monthly Oxford leaders meeting, where Joe and I and Chief Saul, Chief Majeska, um, township supervisor clerk, gosh, who else, OCTV, um, librarian, superintendent, yeah, the school, schoolwork president usually attend a monthly meeting, um, every month. And, um, there is one Thursday.
Cancelled.
It's cancelled?
There was only like four people responding to it.
Oh, okay, that's good, so I couldn't attend it, but I tried to attend.
You were one of those who couldn't.
Yeah, I tried to attend all of them, oh, Phil from Parks, and so we rotate locations, um, if anyone's ever interested in attending those, I think that any of the other council members.
It's probably going to a place, right?
Sit in, but it's, um.
Eight o'clock.
Yeah, eight, eight to nine, sometimes it runs over at varying locations within Oxford in general, and, um, it's really great just to connect with, you know, schools and, you know, fire, like, everybody, sheriff's office are all there, so. Um, if anyone on council is interested, let me know, um, but otherwise, I'll continue to try to attend those, um, and they're just good, I'll bring back any information I learned from the council meetings too, under my comments.
I think it was down to me, Jack and Phil.
Okay, yeah, so I'm glad.
You were, yeah, you were out, right? Yeah, yeah. And Kimberly, oh yeah, Kimberly was, uh, responded positive also, but everyone else is like, nothing, 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 not gonna be there, it's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and the Lions for sure, so.
Saturday night.
Yeah, that, that's all moved to a grand seven fifty-nine, it's like a new record. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.